I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and seeing there's nobody in this room, I guess no one else is recording the meeting. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some special recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two items. First, I want to make you aware, excuse me, that Senator Moore was recently recognized by the S Association of School Committees as the association's 2016 legislator of the year. I think it speaks highly of Senator Moore's commitment to education. I know he's a great friend of Auburn, we're very fortunate with both his and Representative Frost's support, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. And then secondly, wanted to let you know that Ms. Sarah Canal, she is the library media specialist or media tech specialist at Swanson Road. She's been invited to speak at a roundtable as part of Tech and Learning Live Conference on May 12th. She actually, and I'll have more information to share with you at our next meeting, worked with a group of students on actually creating an app. And it was recently, were recently recognized, but I want to have the names and all of that for you the next time. But Ms. Canal really is on the cutting edge all the time with what she does. Not only as a English teacher formerly, but as a media tech specialist and really engages the kids, so I want to congratulate her. It's quite an honor for her to present at this conference, so I wanted you to be aware.
Excellent. Any comments?
Yeah, through the chair. She's great, my daughter, who does computers with her, and she's really great with the kids and they love her, so she's doing a great job.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that. I don't see any citizens for commenting. Rich, did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay. And we have no student representatives, given probably the bad weather. And I would seek approval of the minutes of January 4th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of January 4th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, Brooklyn Plant, if you remember, she was the Project 351 representative for Auburn Middle School. This time of year being what it is, she is out sick today, so she'll come to our next meeting to do a presentation. I did want to make you aware of a $1,000 donation to the Swanson Road Intermediate School for the Reach Out to Schools program. Mrs. LaBretton actually shared this information with us and is for the purchase of 18 Ozobots to support the educational program. So it is my recommendation that you accept that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the $1,000 from Reach Out for Schools DCU to the Swanson Road Intermediate School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion?
Yes, what are Ozobots?
It's part of their robotics program that they have. I don't know what they are specifically, but I know it's all part of that program. So I can get more information, but it's a exciting instrument or a tool that they're going to be using.
Okay.
Maybe we could bring an Ozobot here for you, Gil, for this meeting.
Yeah, I might want one at home, I don't know.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item, just wanted to make you aware, I think I had shared with you in here some information, the Education Week's quality count, it actually puts this out on an annual basis. And I believe this is the third year in a row that Massachusetts has been ranked number one in the nation. So I think it speaks highly not only to the Commonwealth's teachers and students and families, but certainly to those in Auburn too, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Any comments?
No, I read that in some other publications and that was awesome to read, it really was. People almost want to knock the schools, but that's excellent.
Okay, moving on.
The next item, the youth health survey at Auburn Middle School. So annually, schools are randomly selected to participate in this survey program. It is anonymous and confidential, though we will be able to get some data, aggregated data. So Auburn Middle School has been selected. It's through a coordinated effort of the Mass Department of Public Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. UMass Center for Survey is actually going to conduct the survey. But I did include in here for you the opt-out because we will be asking parents to give their permission or to sign up if they don't want their child to participate. But it really is to, it's a statewide initiative to really look at behaviors, as it says, that focus on youth behaviors that endanger health and academic achievement, including tobacco, alcohol, and drug use. Behaviors leading to injuries such as drunk driving, violence, and suicide attempts, poor dietary behaviors, and physical activities. So two of the classrooms of students will be surveyed, and any information that we do get back, I'd be happy to share with you.
Excellent. Sounds reasonable.
So in terms of school choice, as you saw when we presented the budget to you back in November, we had made an assumption, as we had reported, that the number of school choice students would remain the same at Auburn Middle and Auburn High next year. It does require your approval in order to maintain those. We do have to report it to the Department of Ed, and then we would begin accepting applications. And this is actually for the 17, 18th school year. We would accept them, or we have been accepting them, through March 31st, and then we'd be drawing them generally right about the 1st of April. So just seek your approval to maintain those same levels as we've had.
Would you entertain that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the school choice at Auburn Middle.
Do I have a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Discussion, wait.
Yeah, I just got a question. This doesn't take away from our own students in Auburn, right?
It doesn't. And I actually, it's been a year or so since I produced that report, but I have done analyses over the years in looking at the attendance rates of our students, the athletic and fine arts participation, their transcript grades and disciplinary. And what we find is they're actually a positive complement to the students that we have here in Auburn. So I think they're appreciative of being here and do put in the work.
Yeah, but it doesn't stop any of the students, children from Auburn going to the school?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
That's my...
Oh, no, absolutely not. Any child who lives in Auburn has a right to attend our school, so no school choice student would ever infringe on that.
Take their place.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I'm not mistaken, we're not even approaching the class sizes that we would be uncomfortable with, correct?
No.
With the addition of these students.
We're in good shape at middle school and high school, yes.
Good. And if I could ask one more question. The 20th, the middle school and the 41th high school, is that the total we're allowed to have, or we're agreeing to have?
Correct.
So we won't be taking in 41 new students, we'll be taking in whatever's been left from...
Correct. It's to maintain that same level, so that next year with this vote of approval, we would have 61 school choice students between the two schools next year.
Yeah. So for people that want to come, I mean, there might only be four or five slots or something like that.
Correct, correct. Very few slots available, yes.
Any further comments?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item is, we do annually at this time of year, we've done a review of our before and after-school programs. They remain a very good cost for families and many do take advantage of that. And based on our analysis, it's my recommendation that we maintain the same rates that we have.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
In terms of the preschool tuition, we do have a sub community leadership team that's working. As you remember, we're hoping to add an additional preschool classroom to offer another full-day opportunity. We're also looking to do that in our commitment to removing financial barriers whenever possible to bring forward a sliding fee. So that's all in the works and we will keep you posted and bring back for a vote as soon as that's available.
Thank you.
Any comments? Seeing none.
This letter I wanted to share with you, it actually came to the Auburn Chamber of Commerce and was from the Special Olympics, but just writing in thanks of the support, of the long-term support that the town of Auburn has given to this great organization and its many tremendous athletes. So I wanted you to see this because obviously through the school committee's approval that started numerous years ago, they continue to use the Auburn High School for the March Special Olympics, and they will be doing so again this year.
Great. Wonderful events there. If you ever have the opportunity to stop by or even volunteer, one time I was the announcer for the basketball games and it was just really, it couldn't have been any more enjoyable or rewarding, so I highly recommend it.
I agree, George. I've been here a few times.
Yeah.
And you're right, it's a great event.
It's fun to watch.
Yep. Great job, the team does it, puts it on too.
They do.
And all the volunteers and everybody that gets together, it's a really good thing.
It's a good, it's a great day. Everyone's respectful of one another, respectful of our schools. It's just a great event, so.
Next item, I just wanted to make you aware that a new AED law has recently passed. It won't go into effect until July of 2018, but just wanted all of us to take some comfort. If you remember, the late Dr. Arthur Pappas, along with his wife, Dr. Martha Pappas, numerous years ago led an initiative and funded it to put AEDs and to make sure that we have them at each of our schools and our municipal buildings in Auburn, which really is a benefit to the residents and certainly to our students and staff. So as we learn more about this, I will keep you apprised, but I doubt that there'll be much impact to us because we have them already in place at every building.
Now we move on to unfinished business.
In terms of the Pachachar Accelerated Repair Program, I did go and, or sent a memo, I should say, to the board of selectmen requesting a town meeting, a special town meeting, as I shared with you. Mrs. Worsbicky and I, Mr. Fahy met with Town Manager Jacobson and CFO Kazanovich to discuss this process. So we did request March 28th with the backup of March 29th due to inclement weather or lack of a quorum. And the benefit to the town would be with MSVA's accelerated repair reimbursement rate of 54.16 percent, that could save tax payers between $350,000 to $475,000, depending on the bid. So they have approved that going forward, and a little bit later you will see that there is a warrant article that I'm going to seek your approval on to bring that forward to the town meeting members.
Any comments? I would just ask that if you know town meeting members, that you urge them to attend, because sometimes when it's a special meeting, they don't always show up. Sometimes even at the regular town meetings, we come up a little bit short and we're on the phones, making some phone calls, so just before the event, if we could just sort of reach out to people so that we can get the deal done that day and not have to push it forward. Thank you.
In terms of the Chinese exchange program, I know I had shared with you that we were holding until the Chinese government made some decisions. And while this would certainly be modified, Dr. Zhang outreach us, and we believe that there is one student who is planning to come to America anyway and is going to be staying, hopefully with a family in Auburn for a couple of weeks at the high school. We were hoping to already have that in place. The details are not yet finalized, but I will keep you apprised when that is. We just wanted to share that that could be back as a potential issue for this year.
Okay.
The circuit breaker audit, I had shared with you back in the fall when we were notified that they were coming from DESI. They did come through, and as you can see in here, they believe that there was an additional $244 that maybe do us, and assuming funding is available for this, we will get those additional dollars. So this is all for, in response to students, some of our most special students with extraordinary costs or out of district or above a certain threshold. So I thank Mrs. Reedy and Mrs. Flynn, who are administrative assistant, for their hard work. It's an awful lot of record-keeping, as well as all of the staff in the schools who work with them. They have to keep very stringent records as well, so I thank them for that money. The FY18 budget, I don't have any recommended changes for you at this time. We do continue to look at it and wait and see. On Wednesday, it's anticipated that Governor Baker will be announcing his proposed budget, which will include the Chapter 70 values for communities. So that's the first step in the budgeting process. Then House and Senate both weigh in before it goes to conference, but we'll have some information on Wednesday.
Okay.
The town meeting, as I said, it has been approved for March 28th. The board of selectmen opened the warrant. It closes on this Thursday. Mrs. Worsbicky and I have prepared this article, well, she prepared it and I reviewed it. This is the exact language. MSVA is very strict in the language that is to be used. So what's included here is the article and then the actual motion. And you'll notice that right now it says to appropriate a sum of money by March 28th. We've worked this with the owner's project manager that we will have bids in hand to be able to tell town meeting the total authorization that we need. So it is my recommendation that you approve the article as written.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We now move on to new business.
So with your approval, I'm going to postpone my mid-year goals up to the next meeting. I'll be able to give those to you in advance, but I did want to, before sharing the upcoming events, just take a moment to thank some of the many people who were involved in the redo, I guess, of this space here. First and foremost, Bay Path Regional School. Mr. LeFlech, the superintendent there, was very gracious in working with the school committee and approving it. Mr. Montville there is one of the members of their leadership team. Mr. Martenson was here with about a dozen students doing it. They built all of these panels here, as well as that beautiful cabinet over there, also under the direction of Mr. Ramahen. The Auburn local cable access team did an awful lot of work in providing funding for the screens as well as the curtains here. They are going to be extended on both sides just a bit. Mr. Siskata, who is the electrician who works for the district part-time, did a tremendous amount of work in here. Obviously, Mr. Hugo did as well in getting things set up. And I also want to thank Mr. Fahy, who really oversaw and helped to coordinate the whole thing. I think it lends some real professionalism to all of you and to the work that you do at these meetings, and I think it's more reflective of that, so it's a good thing.
I think it's great. Any comments?
Thank you.
The woodworking is beautiful, isn't it?
Well, you did a great job.
Yeah.
I checked in on them from time to time.
Yeah, we stopped them one day.
Yeah. But no, it looks fantastic. When I came in the other day and just peeked through the door, I said, "This looks great." It was just, we really got our money's worth out of that curtain that was hanging in front of us since the day I got on the board and I believe it was probably...
Long before that.
Well before that, so I'm glad that we find a home for that curtain or...
Well, I don't know if anyone was willing to take it or not, but...
If it's still around, I'd like to just cut off a little piece of it, hang it.
Garden.
Hang it, yeah, hang it in my basement, but no, it's, no, this looks fantastic. Thank you very much to all involved.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I get a brick from the old high school.
That's right. And then in terms of upcoming events, we did just recently, a week or so ago, had our half-day for PD. The grade level showcases happened at Pachachar. I spoke to Mrs. Stinkels, happened on Friday. She said they were extremely well received and well attended. And Swanson has a big for-good assembly that's taking place on February 1st, so lots going on at all times of the year.
Okay. We now move on to business and financial.
So Mrs. Worsbicky has prepared a number of items for you. The first one is the year-to-date budget report that she and I continue to review on a regular basis. We remain to be in good shape. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Seeing none.
The next item are transfers, and these, all with explanations for them, help us to be sure that any time that we go in deficit in the account, whether it's due to subs or whatnot, just to balance those. So it is my recommendation that you approve the transfers between the series. Most of the front page, or all of the front page, don't require approval, they're just cleaning up some line items.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series recommended by our business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So several times a year, we provide for you a revolving account update on each of the accounts. You'll note that on some of them, it does include payroll incumbents, or one, I should say, for school lunch, so that balance looks lower, but it doesn't take into account the funds that will be taken in from lunches. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, otherwise it's really an informational item for you.
Any questions? Seeing none.
The grants update, this is also something we received an update about earlier in the fall, back in October. Just to let you know, the grants that we've received, we did receive an additional, the Fund Code 274, which is mainly for outside consulting to professional development of $19,000, plus along with, you've seen along the way, some smaller grants, but I appreciate the time and energy that goes into writing them and managing them from all members of the team involved.
Any comments, questions? I just have one question, Dr. Brown. Do we, do professional development as far as grant writing, or is that something that the leadership team or various teachers do on their own?
It's typically something that teachers will do on their own. The Chamber of Commerce grants, the cultural grants are ones, the yellow school bus grants, those are typically done on their own. The ones at the top are ones from 274 all the way up to Title 2A. Those are ones that are written by leadership team members, and they're ones that they have written over the years. We do regularly check the DESI website to see if there are any grants that we're eligible for. Oftentimes, they're very targeted in the communities that they're, will fund, you know, whether it's sometimes a higher index of low socioeconomic families. Depends on the initiative, but we do check it regularly and if there's an opportunity, we seek it out. I know that Mrs. King, our Director of Food Services, is looking at a grant right now. It's in combination, I believe it's with the Patriots. They have some grant funding, all about promoting healthy eating and things, so, but we don't really do professional development around it. It's really on people's initiative.
Okay, great. I just, I, we seem to see a lot of them crossing the desk here, and I was just wondering why they're so good at it.
Yeah.
It's probably just because they've been doing it for a while.
For some of them, that's exactly it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. The regional collaborative budget meeting, Mrs. Worsbicky and I attended the most recent one about a week and a half or so ago. This one was held at Shepherd High, and what we decided to do at that one, there were not legislators in attendance at that meeting, but what we looked at was to try and brainstorm if there are any ways for us to share ideas, materials, staff, to create greater efficiencies. For example, one community shared that they'd spent $100,000 so far in HVAC repairs and bringing in a consultant for that. And as we get talking, and that's just one example, some other schools said, well, that, you know, they were spending X amount of dollars. So the idea was, well, maybe we would create an efficiency if we were to hire a shared individual with HVAC experience who could work amongst the schools, would be presumably at a lower rate than bringing in an outside contractor. So right now, different people have been assigned the task of collecting data, and when we have our next meeting sometime in early February, I think it may be on February 9th, we're going to bring back that information and continue the discussion. So just wanted to keep you apprised that we continue to work on that. I think the message that we sent to the legislators, and I again appreciate Representative Frost and Senator Moore being there, plus other senators and representatives, I think heard loud and clearly from those in attendance that we need support in terms of helping to get our per pupil expenditure costs higher. In many of the communities, it's lower than the state average, and some significantly lower. So we talked about, you know, unfunded mandates and, you know, the drain that that puts on our systems and staffing and such. So I think the message was very much heard, and hopefully it will be reflected in budgets that come out, not only from Governor Baker's, but House and Senate budget numbers coming too. So we'll keep you posted.
Moving on.
In terms of the pro-pay update, the middle school project, we are, as I reported, Cecilia, Mrs. Worsbicky recently did, as soon as we get some budget or cost estimate information, we'll be going back to the SBC to install rooftop dehumidification unit for the gymnasium at Auburn Middle School. We found it to be too hot, so that remains as open project. The accelerated repair project to Bryn Mawr is complete and it's awaiting the final audit from MSVA, which is part of the process. And in terms of it, Swanson Road, she'll soon be submitting the final reimbursement request, which will again signal MSVA to begin their audit. So we're well underway, so we will be hopefully having these all wrapped up before we embark on a new one for the Pachimoo project, so.
Good.
We'll wrap it.
Okay.
In terms of the bus application, if you remember from early in the fall, probably September or October or so, Mrs. Worsbicky had reported on the number of late applications that we received and the challenge that it presents, because during the summer, we're in the process and working closely with the bus company of setting up bus routes, and they're based on the number of students that we believe we have at the time. As you can see here in FY17, there were 201 families who submitted bus applications late, and that, those are families not new to the community, because those weren't considered late. Ones who had been in school with us last year had been participating on the bus, most of them, and were late. And at $50, it doesn't seem to be bringing down the number of the late ones. So as Mrs. Worsbicky had mentioned to you back in the fall, it's her recommendation that we increase that late fee. Now with that, hopefully what it will mean is no one will have to pay it, and they'll get their bus application in on time, because if we don't have the data, it just creates a challenge for us. So it is our recommendation that you increase the late fee, and with your approval, assuming you approve the other changes with the bus pass, that they would actually be due on May 1st, excuse me, April 1st, instead of the June 1st deadline, and that being in keeping with her work with AA Transportation. With your approval, we would start, so it is actually May 1st. I was looking at one up above. So to go to May 1st, we would start advertising this as early as later on this week, and would send home copies posted on our website, and remind families at every school committee meeting about this.
I would entertain that motion. Do I have a second? Discussion? Is that a second thought?
Yes, a second.
A second and discussion? Okay.
So thank you for providing the updates to us, the front end. I think it was meant last year, and I think it may be helpful to both put on the website as well as on this forum, that this is refundable if for some reason they report, is it not? Because I think, I think that even just for most of the other parents, they might be, well, they're not sure, but they might even reconsider moving out of the community, so I think that would help, like soften the blow of a $100 late fee.
Yeah, so through the chair, now that you say that I do remember you bringing that up, and we can absolutely add that, because it is a practice that we have, that if either a family moves or if their circumstances change and they no longer want the pass, we pro-rate it. So if they keep it for a month, we keep a tenth of the cost, and so we can send it back. We can absolutely add that on there.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Can people pay through credit card now? Is that approved?
So through the chair, that is, it's going with your approval. Everything is all ready to go, and we'd advertise that in the email, so they'll be able to do it online and submit that way with the payment.
Okay. Is it PayPal or just any card?
It's actually through Unibank, that Unibank Gold system. We currently, right now, collect preschool fees that way. We'll soon be able to do for the before and after-school programs too, which I think will be a great convenience for families. So they'll still need to complete the actual application in hard copy, but they'll be able to pay online.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I would just, I would just reiterate what you said. This is, this is not an increase in any way, shape, or form. This is a late fee. We're not trying to get any more money out of people, but what we're trying to do is lessen the inconvenience on all of the parents in town, because it's always, it's always rough going at the beginning as far as getting the stops down, getting the timing down. Parents are waiting, you know, 30, 35 minutes for their students to get off the bus, where it would typically take 20 a couple of weeks into the process. Well, the sooner that everything's established, the sooner that you're going to be able to pick up your child in a reasonable amount of time. So it's just really, it's unfair that the parents who do pay on time are inconvenienced by the hundreds who don't. So again, it's not an increase. So again, it's not an increase. It's, let's, let's stop the inconvenience and, and pay on time. And there are plenty of warnings, as you said. We've mentioned at every school committee meeting, and notices go home. So this is not us trying to empty out anyone's pockets. This is us trying to lessen the inconvenience.
You just said what I was going to say, George, but about the information getting out there. I mean, you do it very early. You continuously do it, and that's not the lack of. We're going to make sure that we can get this all together, so it works out for everybody.
Yeah. Through the chair, thank you both for your comments. Did just want to emphasize for anybody watching, the fee remains the same at a hundred dollars per child with a two hundred and fifty dollar cap outside of late fees, and it's just the late fee being changed, so thank you.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And we now move on to policies.
So the policies as part of our review, you'll see that the first several ones, beginning with CGIA and down through GDK, are ones that we have gone through and reviewed, and you can see in red the minimal changes that are made. So it is my recommendation that you approves, approve those as amended, and on many of them, you're simply affirming that what is already in place remains intact.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Notice the motion to approve the above policies as amended. Additionally, the below policies recommended for approval on first reading. Second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
The next policy is EBBA, the multi-use vehicle use policy. Mrs. Worz Bicki put this together. She got some guidance from MASC and, and local districts. With the approval of the multi-use vehicle that we have available, it's just putting in place all of the steps and protocols that need to be followed, and it is our recommendation that you approve it as written.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve policy EBBA, multi-use vehicle use on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And then as a brief update regarding the filter policy, just wanted to share with you what I've done to date. So I have spoken with several of our nurses in reviewing this. We actually, and it's actually was approved by school committee, we have a delegation file on form, a form on a file, I should say, and regarding EpiPens and some other medications. So that's already in place. We do send school nurses on every group field trip right up through grade eight. And at grades nine through twelve, many of the children at that age are already self-administering. So if they have an EpiPen, they're carrying it on their own. If they have an inhaler, they're doing the same thing. But in speaking with the nurses, what became clear is they play, which I knew, but the policy, I don't think really reflects that. They play a critical role in using their judgment. So even a student at the high school, perhaps is a student who has diabetes, and depending on the nurse's level of comfort, and also in communication with the parent, if the child is not an independent self-administer of that, we would send a nurse or some trained individual for that. So what I'd like to do is continue working with the nurses to bring back a policy to you that I believe fully captures how we do business in the Auburn Public Schools, always with safety of students in mind. I also have samples from some other districts of how they handle this, just to get some guidance from them.
Wayne?
I just thought we were going to bring this up tonight, and I went to the next meeting, because we had people here that wanted to speak.
Yeah, so through the chair, I actually spoke with that parent earlier just to update her. So I just wanted to update you as a committee, because it's really the school committee's policy, so you'll be aware of it.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions or comments? No, I would say, I just, just thank you for, for putting that together, and we look forward to some more information coming forward. And that, I really think that's the best way to handle this, is to make sure that we've covered all the bases before we even have any sort of discussion. And thank you for keeping in contact with the parent who was concerned.
Sure.
It seems like she's pretty happy with us at least pushing forward here. Thank you. And we do need to go into executive session?
We don't actually.
We don't? Okay, Wayne?
Could I make a comment? I, I know I didn't do it at the time earlier, but I just like to make a comment that I'd like to congratulate our new president, Donald J. Trump, for getting an office and hopefully that, you know, everybody can start working together to keep America, USA going. And you got to give him the benefit of the doubt. He's in there. It'd be a lot better to have people stop these riots and stuff like that that are unnecessary. We're here to work together, and it just seems like there's people out there that just don't want to do that. They want to abuse people, they want to abuse police, they want to abuse other people. I'm not going to get into that part of it, because I don't want to. But I would just like to say, hopefully he will help make America great. If not, we can vote him out in four years, but I would like to congratulate him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.